We need to be keep it very, very, very quiet.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, a lot of surprises.
Uh, did you, did you, did you? Yeah.
Your tie on the ground.
Yeah. All of a sudden, it's hard to find time to tell you that.
I am surprised, but I can't relate.
Yeah. It's just, uh...
Mm.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. I want to get things going so that we can all enjoy some time out in the lobby with Bob Gaylor. I know there's a lot of you coming in, there are probably still going to be some more people coming in. We have many visitors with us tonight, many of whom are here to help us recognize retiring City Attorney Bob Gaylor. There are two sign-up sheets in the back. One is to address Mr. Gaylor at the time we do a presentation for him, and the other one is to speak on city matters. So if you, whatever your intent would be, you can sign up back there. So before we get moving, I want to, I want to stand and have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But tonight, I want you all to keep in your hearts and prayers, Mr. Jim Benson, who is one of our former colleagues and a friend of ours, a friend to the community. He will be going under surgery tomorrow with a quadruple bypass, so if you will, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start the meeting out with some proclamations. I always like the proclamations because Bob has always read them for me. I think I've read a few, but I refer to Bob. First proclamation for this evening is going to be an Arbor Day proclamation and Tree City USA recognition. I'd like to invite the Parks Department Supervisor Tony Hara Mio and Angela Poulsen from the Colorado State Forest Service forward.
Good evening, Mayor.
First, I'd like to start off by having City Attorney Bob Gaylor read the proclamation.
City of Commerce City Proclamation. Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world, and whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 25th consecutive year, and whereas the City Council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Commerce City declares April 15, 2016 as Arbor Day, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings and tree care information to the community. Be it further resolved that City Council urges all residents to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the city's community forestry program. And witness whereof I hereby hereby set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed the 4th day of April 2016, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. Is there a motion? Mr. Boak?
Move to accept the proclamation as read.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'd like to ask Ms. Poulsen to give her presentation.
Before she goes, Mayor, I got a few words.
Sure, go ahead, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. On behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation in golf, it's my pleasure to be here tonight in celebration of Arbor Day in Commerce City. Also joining us this evening is Angela Poulsen of the Colorado State Forest Service to present the Commerce City with the 25th consecutive Tree City USA Award. In celebration of Arbor Day, Friday, April 15th, we will hand out some tree seedlings at the recreation center, as well as pamphlets on tree selection and planting. Also, in addition to celebrating Arbor Day this evening, we felt it appropriate to commemorate the years of service of our City Attorney, Bob Gaylor. To do this, we have planted a tree in Los Valientes Park. Thank you, Bob, for your years of service to Commerce City.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would now like to introduce Angela Poulsen to present the 25th consecutive Tree City USA Award.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd just like to thank the Mayor and the council for the time on the agenda today to present this award. The National Arbor Day Foundation and the State Forest Service that administer this award realize that there is no automatic renewal for this award every year. There's four different things that you have to do every year to be eligible for this award. One, you have to delegate tree care decisions to a professional tree board or tree manager appointed by the community. You have to have a basic tree care ordinance in place in your city. You have to provide financial support to the urban forest at the level of at least $2 per capita, and you have to hold an annual Arbor Day observance. I realize that as the leaders of this community, you're faced with a huge list of issues that are vying for your time and attention and your dollars, but I can tell by this city's application year again that this city understands the value of trees beyond their aesthetic appeal. You know that taking care of your trees results in many social benefits, resulting in a greater feeling of community connection and reduced crime. You know that trees offer many environmental benefits, including biodiversity, carbon sequestration, and cleaner air and water. And you understand that trees offer many economic benefits, including dramatically reduced energy costs, higher shopping district revenues, and bolstered property values. In fact, studies show that trees give a return on investment of three to five times their planting and maintenance costs back to the community. So it's easy to see that our quality of life is dependent on trees, but our community trees are also dependent on us to take care of them. This is especially true today in light of the arrival of the invasive Emerald Ashbore into this state in 2013, and that's a pest that threatens to wipe out 15% of our community trees in this state. The way that Commerce City is taking care of its urban trees is a model for the way that cities are going to need to take care of their trees moving forward. Over the past 25 years, Commerce City has planted 2,000 new trees throughout the city's parks, trails, open spaces, and public rights away. In the past year alone, the city planted 200 new trees through regular park maintenance and through special projects like the Frontera Park and Outdoor Leisure Pool projects. I'm pleased to announce that Commerce City has met all the requirements to receive the Tree City USA Award for 2015, and with that, I'd like to congratulate you all, and award to the Mayor this award.
Thank you. Before we come down, before we come down, I have to say, thanks to such a great Parks and Rec Department, and with people like Tony, we're able to achieve these things because they do all of the hard work. So, Tony, thank you to you and you and your team.
Thank you, sir.
All right, if everybody will join me down front, please. Tony?
Thanks. Appreciate it.
I'd like to invite the Ralston House Representative forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Mr. Gaylor, want to read that proclamation?
City of Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas Commerce City has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares this month of April 2016, Child Abuse Prevention Month, to bring further awareness to the issue. And witness whereof I hereby set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the 4th day of April 2016, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. Need a motion? Mr. Amador?
Move to approve proclamation 16-08, declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read by City Attorney Bob Gaylor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll be right down to greet you. I just wanted to say a few things. Thank you so much for what you do for our community and communities around us. We know after a few years ago when we had a bad run with some, some child issues, you know, there was another one child our police department searched for a long time in the dump, and, and we see these things happen throughout the community, and I appreciate you being here and doing what you do to help these families. Now if the council will join me down front, please, we will pass off this proclamation. Go ahead, if you have any comments, now's the time.
Oh, well, absolutely. I just want to say thank you again to the City of Commerce City, but I have to admit, when I first walked in, this is the most happening city council I have been to so far this year, and then it occurred to me, why? So, I have to say, congratulations. I'm a native of the Denver metro area and have seen Commerce City become such a thriving city. I have to admit that you must have some small hand in that, so congratulations so much on your hard work with the city.
Thank you. National Crime Victims Rights Week. I'd like to invite the interim Chief of Police Richardson and Victim Services Coordinator, Kim Messina, forward to accept the proclamation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Gaylor, how about the proclamation, please?
Proclamation reads, City of Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas Americans are victims of more than twenty million crimes each year, affecting family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. And whereas, in addition to these challenges, crime victims face criminal, military, and juvenile justice systems that at times ignore their rights. And whereas the victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including those affected by domestic minor sex trafficking, cybercrime, as well as immigrant, urban youth, and LGBT victims. And whereas, the Victim Services Community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective by early intervention with services that support and empower victims, creating a pathway to recovery from crime and abuse. And whereas, the Commerce City Police Department and its Victim Services Unit is participating in National Crime Victims Rights Week, which helps raise awareness of victims' rights. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council hereby proclaims the week of April ten through sixteen, two thousand sixteen, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming the city's commitment to serve victims of crime with dignity and respect. And witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the fourth day of April, two thousand sixteen, City of Commerce City, Colorado. Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. I'm hoping for a motion. Mr. McAdonally.
Thank you. I would move to accept the proclamation for National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Chief, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I'd like to talk about the Commerce City Police Department's efforts to continue to support crime victims in many different ways, and most recently, we have partnered with the City of Brighton to improve those services, and that is going forward in a very positive way, and we've received positive comment from the victims that we provide services for. Also here tonight is our Victim Services Advocate Manager, Kim Messina, to talk a little bit more about that partnership and how we're serving our crime victims in Commerce City.
Okay.
Mayor and council, thank you so much. I'm Kim Messina. This year's theme really exemplifies the amazing work that we have implemented here in the city within the last two years. Our partnership with Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services Unit is serving victims, building trust, and restoring hope is the foundation for this great work that we've been doing. Through this amazing leadership and positive changes, we are committed to meeting the needs of victims and providing quality services to all citizens of Commerce City. Serving victims and building trust, as well as restoring hope, truly underscores the importance of the early intervention to establish trust with victims so that we can restore hope, healing, and recovery. It also restores the trust in those who respond to them and help them through these most difficult times. Meeting victims where they're at also restores, takes a lot of resources, dedication, persistence, and establishes a welcoming, compassionate, supporting environment in which the Commerce City Police Department has done. The members of the Brighton Commerce City Victim Services Unit have unwaveringly commitment and tirelessly dedicated to victims we serve. I'd like to recognize the great efforts and dedication of these advocates. Within one year, the Victim Services Unit increased services by over fifty percent from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fifteen, we increased it by an additional twenty-six percent, serving thirty-eight hundred victims and responding on scene nine hundred and seventy-nine times. Meeting victims where they're at is really important, and we appreciate the leadership and the commitment by all, by the Commerce City Police Department, as well as the city. Thank you.
Thank you. It's another one of those programs that do so much for our community. When you happen to see a victim advocate at work and how they handle the issue and take care of the victims, it's an important part of what you all do. So, thank you very much for the services you provide to our community. Now, if the council will join me down front. Yes, sir? Some of the council members didn't remember that we voted, and I want to assure you all we did. Checked with the city clerk, so the record's good. Now we'll move into citizen communication. If you have signed up on the sheet to address the council, I'll call your name to come forward to the podium. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. And we'll start off on this citizen communication sheet, and we'll start with Mr. Orville Lewis. Mr. Orville Lewis, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Orville Lewis. I'm a previous council member, and I have a few things I have to get off my chest tonight.
Can you give me your address real quick, Orville? Please.
My first question is, did City Council have anything to do with the advancement of the police chief?
Well, I'll answer that question for you.
I'm sorry, my hearing aids aren't working real well.
That's all right. I'll try to get loud. How's that better? I'll answer that question for you, Mr. Lewis. This City Council does not serve in a capacity of managing personnel for this city when it comes to the police chief. That falls under the city manager's authority.
That's what I thought. It seems to me like since I've left council, there's nine city managers. I thought we only had one. We never did interfere in the city manager's decisions, but it seems like now it's just, he's ruled by somebody. I don't know who.
Well, I can assure you, he's not ruled by this council. We have not overstepped our bounds of keeping separate from personnel decisions.
Our job on council was the name that given to us by the electorate of Commerce City, and that's counselors. That's all the council's supposed to do is counsel. I just wonder if this individual was given an advancement instead of the boot after he lost fifty to sixty percent of our police force due to his style of leadership and management? And is he going to do the same to the city?
I'll answer that the best I can. This City Council did not make that promotion. However, I do believe in Troy Smith. I think he's a good man, and I know there's some issues with our police department going through some hard times, but they're making some changes and reforms, and sometimes reforms are necessary. But we did not hire, nor will we fire anybody in the administrative other than the city manager is our one employee.
Okay.
In the city administration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. It's good to see you again. I'm glad that you came out tonight. All right. I'm going to leave that one alone, but I will tell you all, if any of you ever have any questions about how the city's managed, the day-to-day management of the city is performed by the city manager. The City Council has three employees, city manager, the city attorney, and the judge. And those are the people that we directly have contact with. Now, it's great that the city manager will come to us and say, hey, this is what I'm doing. Are you guys all okay with it when it comes to a major decision? But he makes that decision, not this council. We are the ones that can affect him during his review process. So, that's how things are handled here at the city, and that's how they'll continue to be handled here at the city. I'd like to call forward David Foster. He is going to speak about Bob Gaylor and his retirement, just because David has to leave early tonight and cannot stay. Mr. Foster, thank you for being here. Please give your name and address for the record.
Great. David Foster, three sixty South, Garfield, Endeavour. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I apologize for being out of order, but I got to be at another meeting by seven thirty. Thanks for giving me this opportunity. Bob, I just wanted to spend a minute to thank you. I've had the great pleasure of practicing for now twenty years, and for all those twenty years, I have been seeing you on many Monday nights up here. And I have to tell you, I've worked with a lot of city attorneys over the years, none who have been more professional and more courteous than yourself. And, you know, it hasn't always been the case that you've been right. You've been right most of the time. When you haven't been right, I've been right. But in all of the years, irrespective of who's right and who's wrong, you've always had the very best future in your heart and in your mind for Commerce City, and that means a lot. You've been a humongous advocate for the citizenry of the city, but really, every Monday night, you're a lawyer for nine somewhat unusual people who are here, all elected, all having different obligations to their own constituents, and that's not an easy task, and I know that. And so, thank you for your service, and thank you for being a friend, and really, at the end of the day, thank you for making me a better lawyer myself, so I appreciate it.
All right, on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, there is a person that came after the sign-up sheet was brought up, so you might want to ask if there's somebody in the audience that would like to address council...
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be on the citizen communication piece?
No.
If you're here to speak on behalf of Bob Gaylor's retirement, we will have that at a later time during the meeting, but I want to double-check, is there anybody that wants to speak during citizen communication?
I want to speak about living here in Commerce City.
Come on up.
I've been here before.
I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Shirley Henai. I live at sixty-three ninety Olive Street.
Okay.
I'm here about the speed on Sixty-Fourth between Monaco and Quebec. I do see police officers sitting in their cars over at the Methodist Church, sometimes checking the speed, but it's no better. There's a lot of speeding going on, especially the semis at speed. Makes vibration in my house, which I don't think should happen. I'm worried about the gas lines. There was a water pipe that broke on December thirtieth on Olive there. I don't know if it was from the semis. I don't know. But I don't know, is there anything being done about the speed?
Well, yes, ma'am, last time you were in.
Uh-huh. It's been a while.
You visited with the chief.
But there's still a lot of people speeding, going outrageous speeds, because between Monaco and Quebec, no stop signs on that stretch of the road.
Okay, so are you suggesting the stop signs?
And the vibration from those semis, the semis that don't speed, I don't get the vibration. Not too long ago, I had a picture frame with a picture in the back bedroom. I mean, it busted all over because of the vibration, you know. I shouldn't have to have that, but if the semis go the speed limit, my house doesn't vibrate. You can feel it. You can feel everything rattle. Can you make, can you lower the speed limit? Because there's a lot of residential homes on that part of Sixty-Fourth.
Sure there are, sure there are, and there's a few things that we have to do. Our engineering department has to determine that stop signs or a light signalized intersection would be warranted based on traffic counts and speed counts. And it's a good thing, tonight, we have a brand-new interim chief of police that's here that can make sure that you're getting the attention that you need to slow people down on Sixty-Fourth Avenue.
Saturday night, when the game was over from the soccer?
Uh-huh.
Oh, my gosh, there was tons of traffic. I heard people honking because apparently, maybe, you know, they were tired of waiting at the stop signs there at Sixty-Fourth. There was an accident on March eleventh at Sixty-Fourth and Pontiac. I don't know if they were going too fast, if they ran a stop sign, but a small child had to go to the hospital. But I, and I know people slow down when they see a police car sitting right there, but it happens. I don't know why they have to speed, you know, because there's so many people.
Well, it happens, speeding happens all over. I understand that you have a situation in front of your home, and we want to make sure that you're getting the service that you deserve. So I would ask City Manager McBroom, where are we at with the traffic studies that we had asked to have done in that area, and did they warrant signs or signalization? And to make sure that we can get more police presence in that area and have contact with this lady so that her issues can be addressed to the best of our ability.
Well, the first effort is always increased enforcement, and it sounds like that's occurring. Don't know yet if that's having any effect on speeds in that area. I do think it would be a good idea for Ms. Henai to speak with interim chief Richardson. Perhaps interim chief Richardson has some updated information about the amount of enforcement that we've been doing in that area.
Even when I was out shoveling snow the other day, those cars, they just speak. I'm really close to the sidewalk, and there's a bike zone right there. You know, they don't need to come that close. The street is wide. You travel down Olive, people honk at you because you're only going twenty-five. You have to go fifteen over the bump. You know, where's, why are people in such a hurry?
That's...
Even by Pioneer Park, the speed limit's thirty-five. You've got those walk crosses where people can walk across, and you have to slow way down. Maybe they should lower the speed there, too, but I don't know. People are always in a hurry. If you don't go fast enough, you get honked at, called names.
We don't...
I don't even go to the intersection of Sixty-Fourth and Olive by my house. But, and I know people slow down when they see a police car sitting right there, but it happens. I don't know why they have to speed.
Well, it happens, speeding happens all over. I understand that you have a situation in front of your home, and we want to make sure that you're getting the service that you deserve. So, I would ask city manager McBroom, where are we at with the traffic studies that we had asked to have done in that area? And did they warrant signs or signalization? And to make sure that we can get more police presence in that area and have contact with this lady, so that her issues can be addressed to the best of our ability.
Well, the first effort is always increased enforcement, and it sounds like that's occurring. Don't know yet if that's having any effect on speeds in that area. I do think it would be a good idea for Ms. Henai to speak with interim chief Richardson. Perhaps interim chief Richardson has some updated information about the amount of enforcement that we've been doing in that area.
Even when I was out shoveling snow the other day, those cars, they just speak. I'm really close to the sidewalk, and there's a bike zone right there. You know, they don't need to come that close. The street is wide. You travel down Olive, people honk at you because you're only going 25. You have to go 15 over the bump. You know, where's, why are people in such a hurry? Even by Pioneer Park, the speed limit's 35. You've got those walk crosses where people can walk across, and you have to slow way down. Maybe they should lower the speed there, too, but I don't know. People are always in a hurry. If you don't go fast enough, you get honked at, called names. I don't even go to the intersection of 64th and Olive by my house. I will back out of my driveway, go down Olive, and go around, because, you know, I just don't like it.
I don't, I don't know why they, I don't know why they speed. I want to make sure that if we need enforcement there, that you get that attention. Is interim chief Richardson in the room? Chief, would you please take this young lady out in the hallway and talk to her about how we can better meet her needs? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
All right, next item, well, let me ask, is there anyone else who had citizen communication that they came to this council meeting for tonight before I move on? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with consent agenda. No, I'm gonna move forward with the consent agenda. Are you running my meeting tonight? Don't worry about that. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are fifteen items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing none? Then, I will not need a mo, let's see, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is on your agenda. Mr. Mackelton?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I'd like the city attorney to read the titles of each of the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Title of ordinance Z-929-16, an ordinance rezoning the properties described in Exhibit A attached hereto made a part hereof, located at the northwest and southwest corners of East 84th Avenue and Allster Street, pinned numbered as printed, Commerce City, Colorado, from agricultural industrial 1 and industrial 2 with certain conditions to industrial 2 with no conditions, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordinance Z-700-01-03-16, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Villages at Buffalo Run East PUD Zone Document. Title of ordinance LUP-54-16, an ordinance amending the future land use plan, figure 3.2 of the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Commerce City. Title of ordinance Z-930-16, an ordinance rezoning the property described in Exhibit A attached hereto made a part hereof, located at 3851 East 70th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordinance AN-236-16, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached hereto made a part hereof, located at 3851 East 70th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado. Title of ordinance 2078, an ordinance amending various sections of the Land Development Code. Title of ordinance 80, or, excuse me, title of ordinance 2081, an ordinance amending Section 22-3 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. Title of ordinance 2083, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code by adding Section 2-3006 entitled Citizen Public Safety Advisory Board to Article 3 of Chapter 2. Title of ordinance 2085, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Gramps Youth Service, TGYS, grant funds in the amount of $4,465 for the support of recreational and educational prevention programs for the youth of Commerce City and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Title of resolution 2016-07, resolution approving award of contract for network and voice communications systems. Title of resolution 2016-37, resolution approving award of contract for purchase of body-worn cameras and digital evidence storage services. Title of resolution 2016-43, resolution setting the mission and goals of the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board. Title of resolution 2016-46, resolution authorizing execution of internal governmental agreement binding between the city of Commerce City and the Colorado Department of Transportation. Title of resolution 2016-47, resolution approving interim city attorney employment agreement. Title of resolution 2016-51, resolution approving internal governmental agreement for animal shelter adoption center services. Mr. Mayor, that completes the consent agenda, and I must say, I think that's the longest consent agenda I've had since I've been city attorney.
Well, you know what? That means it was a long one, Bob. Yeah, I didn't want to wear you out completely. There's a lot of people here that you're gonna want to visit with in a little while. All right, we have a motion and a second, all the titles have been read. I'll ask for a roll call, roll call vote on the consent agenda.
It's not enough, Gerald. I don't believe our controls are working.
Our lights aren't working up here, nothing. You might have to call the roll. Yes. Yes.
Councilman Diaz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carson is excused. Councilman Teeter.
Yes.
Councilman Amador.
Yes.
Councilman Mackel Downey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Yes.
Councilman Douglas.
Yes.
The vote is eight aye, one excused.
Motion is carried, consent agenda is passed. And for the record, I think we need to say that Mr. Mackel Downey, Councilwoman Elliott, and Mayor Protembolic are here. All righty, next item is administrative council business. There's one item that we need to address tonight. It's the Regional Air Quality Council, which has a vacancy for a local government member representing the northern area. Councilman Diaz has expressed interest to apply through the governor's process. Does the council support Councilman Diaz's pursuit of this appointment? Is there any discussion? I think he will do a fine job for us. So, can I get a motion? Do you need a motion there, Bob, right?
Yes.
You were just about to stop me, weren't you?
Yes.
Need a motion to allow him the appointment to this board. Mr. Mackel Downey.
I would move that council support, excuse me, Councilman Diaz in his application to the Regional Air Quality Council.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, now, we're going to move into presentations. And our big presentation this evening is recognizing the service of retiring city attorney Bob Gaylor. I'm gonna get up and serve as kind of a master ceremonies, if you will, tell you a little bit about my experience with Mr. Gaylor. I won't take up a lot of time, because I know many of you are here. I want to share your experiences. So, please bear with us. Are you gonna move the microphones up here? I'm gonna sit here for a minute until it's time to meet with Bob down front. So, I've had the opportunity to serve with Bob for a long time. I became, I left my employment with the city in 1999. This is my thirteenth year as an elected official in Commerce City. I worked for the city for ten years prior to that, so I got to know Bob very well, considered him a very good friend. There's some things that I always think about when I think about Bob. I want you all to know, we just went through this process for two and a half to three years, was the DIA negotiations, and Rick Teeter was on that committee with me, representing our city at the county level. And Bob Gaylor came to every one of those meetings. And Bob deserves a lot of credit for making sure that we are recognized in the capacity that we deserve to be recognized. So, thank you, Bob. And with the 1A for DIA passing and the benefit to this community, that's 27% of all the revenue that will be, the Adams County side of that revenue for the development that takes place on the airport. And Commerce City will be forever grateful for your services for that. I think one of my favorite things that I like to talk about with Bob, it was one of the biggest things I've ever heard him have to do. There was a council member that ended up having a lady thrown in jail for having a horse that was brought back into the city. Sherry will probably remember this. But Mrs. Conter went to jail for bringing Cocklebur back into the city. And you know, if you go over to Pioneer Park, there's a horse statue there, and that's to represent Cocklebur. And when I was a little kid, I would walk up there and pet that horse. And when I became a city employee and I put on an orange shirt, she would chase me with a broom away from her house. She hated the city because of how they treated her over that doggone horse. But Mr. Gaylor went on Christmas Eve and defied the council member that pushed to have her put in jail and got Mrs. Conter out of jail on Christmas Eve. You could've lost your job over that, Bob. But you know what? It was the right thing to do, and thank you for doing it. Shows just what kind of man you are. I also wanted to say, you know, Bob Gaylor is the, by far, the best city attorney we've ever had. But I think, I think even more importantly, he's by far the best city attorney that we'll ever have. So, thanks, Bob. All righty, let's see here, this is tough for me. I don't know what we're gonna do. The man that wrote the charter, whom I thought never was gonna leave this city, is leaving. And you talk about one person that did so much for this community, it's Bob Gaylor. He made sure that everything that was done was done legally. All right, I want to invite audience members who signed up to speak forward, and I'll call you up to the podium based on how you signed up. We're gonna start with the Commerce City Historical Society. Please come forward.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Good evening, my name is Deborah Bollock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street.
I'm Reba Droder, 7505 East 121st Place, Thornton.
Thelma Cole, 5841 East 67th Place.
Sheila Harris, 6600 East 78th Way.
Thank you all.
Before I begin, I do want to introduce Sheila Harris. In March, we had, March or February? In March, we had our annual meeting, and we had two positions open, and we voted Esther Hall in again and Sheila Harris, and Thelma is going to be still an advisory board member. So, I just wanted you to know why she was up here. So, I'm gonna begin. So, we've learned as a historical society that we can't change the history, which we've tried, but Renee doesn't listen to me, so we can't do that. But we can record it, and so that's what we're doing. Today, we are here witnessing how fast our city is continually changing. Situations and people do not last forever, and I too thought Bob was gonna be here forever. I knew that there would be a day come that all of our longtime city residents, or not residents, but city employees that work for Commerce City would start leaving. And this is truly changing the city right before our eyes, and we've seen many people leave in the last couple of years that have worked here for thirty-five years or more. We have all watched the growth. We've all watched people come and go to the city offices and on city council. And last year, we honored Bob Gaylor in our Gene Klein Angel Award, and Thelma is going to read that bio that we presented. Some of you weren't there, some of you were, and we want the people watching tonight to hear what we had to say about him.
Bob Gaylor has been involved with Commerce City Historical Society since we have been incorporated. He was our first speaker at our first lunch in 2010, and has, just last year, he was honored with the Charter Convention. This year, we would like to honor Bob by himself for what he has personally done for the city of Commerce City. Bob was born in South Dakota in 1936. He graduated from high school in 1954 and attended college at University of South Dakota, graduating in 1958. In 1960, he graduated from law school and enlisted in the army. He attended boot camp at Fort Benning, Georgia. That's the basic officer's school. He was in the Judge Advocate Program in the military and graduated in '61 from the University of Virginia. He was stationed in France from 1961 to 1964. Bob and Terry were married in France in 1962. In 1964, he resigned from the Judge Advocate Program and returned to Colorado. Since then, Bob has been involved and known many people in the Commerce City community. In 1965, he started practicing law with Berger Rothstein. Bob became the Commerce City City Attorney in 1968. In 1969 to 1973, he became a partner of Berger and Rothstein. In 1970, he was the attorney for the Charter Commission, authoring the charter on behalf of the commission. This charter stands today in its entirety as an amazing example for all people in Colorado. Bob went into private practice from 1973 to January of 2006 in Commerce City, and in 2006, he became the full-time city attorney for Commerce City. Bob was very instrumental in organizing the special improvement districts, which enabled paved streets, curb gutters, and sidewalks through the core part of Commerce City. He was also very instrumental in the development in the northern portion of Commerce City through working with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District to allow for installation of the water and sewer lines. He has spent a lifetime working on the city ordinances to improve the quality of life for the people of Commerce City. He has worked with every single mayor the city has elected and has worked with every council since 1968. He is very proud of the fact that he has been the city attorney for the past forty-seven years. Bob and his wife, Terry, live in Aurora and have two grown children, Richard and Deborah.
Thank you. Unbelievable what that man has done. I was two years old when he started as city attorney. Huh, Bob? But that's, you know, that's not what comes to mind with the historical society coming up to the podium. You remember that time they visited, and they brought us little jars with brick, bricks from the Adam City High School? As a little momento, we could have some of the bricks. Bob Gaylor and Jim Benson ate theirs.
They tried to.
They tried to, and I went over and, and after the meeting, Bob had some in his hand, and he said, Sean, what is this stuff? And I couldn't help but laugh, because it was bricks from Adam City High School. So, Bob, you've had a lot of, a lot of fun times around here, a lot of serious times, but I have to bring up those, when that kind of triggers those moments, they have to be talked about. Go ahead, Deborah.
So, now, it's forty-eight years. Last year, it was forty-seven, but today, it's forty-eight years. So, not only has Bob worked for the city of Commerce City, he's also worked for many Commerce City residents that have lived here for a long time, doing their personal legal work for them. He's created many friendships in our city. I wish I could just put a hat on his head and hook it up to a computer and suck all the information out that is in his head about the institutional knowledge of the city. A lot of it's gone away tonight, so it's amazing, everything that he has been involved with. He has much wisdom and has been so dedicated to Commerce City for forty-eight years. It's going to be so different watching the council meeting without Bob. Not only has Bob worked with every mayor of this city since 1968... Not only has Bob worked with every mayor of this city since 1968, he's worked with every city council member that has been seated since that time. When we interviewed Bob a couple of years ago, we said, "Well, who was the best mayor?" We were trying to get him to tell us. And he, he wouldn't go for it. He said, "Every one of them did a great job and they always had the best of Commerce City in their heart." We're going to miss you, and we hope the best and most happiness for your retirement. As a member of the Commerce, he is a member of our Commerce City Historical Society, and we hope that you and Terry will come to some of our events. And we will definitely be in touch with you to continue to get your input on our displays. When I do displays about the city, I ask him to come and look to make sure our facts are correct. And he just came and looked at the charter display that we have. So again, Bob, thank you for supporting the Historical Society. We're really going to miss you, and I hope that you and Terry get to do a lot of traveling and enjoy your retirement. And we do have a few gifts for you.
So, Bob, I, I don't recall when our paths first crossed, very long time ago, with Oral Daniel and Kenny Gehagen and Ivan and Leo. Many, many decades have passed. And what I learned from you was integrity. And even when situations were very difficult and people downright insulting you, you acted with grace. And I admire you for that. And I know this is true. As you leave the city, incredible amounts of wisdom and history will leave this town. And I just wanna thank you. And I wrote you a little card that said, "We won't forget you, so please don't forget us."
Good evening.
Hi. So I'm Hannah Mullen, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Pearl Mutter. He sends his apologies for not being able to attend tonight, but I am presenting you with a congressional record. So for those of you that don't know what a congressional record is, it's a record, the official record of the United States Congress. So there are various sections within a congressional record, and we get to enter these through extension of remarks. And it's for, a way for our office to give tributes to people that have done amazing things in our community. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read it?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So, this was entered in to the proceedings and debates of the 114th Congress Second Session. So it says, "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to recognize and applaud Commerce City Attorney Robert Gaylor for his decades of service to the city of Commerce City, Colorado. For over 40 years, Mr. Gaylor has been active within the city, including helping to draft the city charter. Originally from South Dakota, Mr. Gaylor came to Colorado as a member of the Judge Advocate General, or JAG, corps at the Rocky Mount Arsenal in 1964. In 1965, ready to leave the Army, Mr. Gaylor passed the Colorado bar and joined the firm of Berger and Rothstein, whose office was just outside the west gate of the arsenal. He served as Assistant County Attorney for Adams County from 1965 to 1968. In January of 1968, he was sworn in as city attorney at the request of then-mayor Eli Koff. In 1970, residents voted overwhelmingly to become a home rule city instead of a statutory city, and the process of adopting a city charter began. The charter, which guides how local government functions, was approved on its first vote, but has only been amended five times since its adoption, one of the city's most memorable legal achievements. I extend my deepest thanks to Robert Gaylor for his service to the community. Thank you for your continuous dedication to serving the constituents of Commerce City, Colorado. Thank you, Ed Pearl Mutter, Member of Congress."
That was awesome. Alright, next I'll call Sherri Kite.
Oh, Mayor and City Council, do you guys ever have a big job ahead of you? Fill in some big shoes. Bob, I just wanna say thank you. For the 12 years I served on City Council, the one thing that strikes in my mind, or several things, is your honesty, your integrity, and your ability to take nine personalities and bring them all together. That's a big job. It's a tough job. And my favorite project, I can look back and say I ever worked with you on, was Buffalo Run. From the time it was an idea to the planning, to the construction, that was probably the one project I worked on that I will forever remember, forever. And thank you, Terry, for giving Bob to us for so many years. I know it was tough. But I just wanna say thank you. And if my dad were alive today, I'd know he'd say thank you as well, because you've been a household word for us since I was about seven.
Alright, Tom Marigan.
You know, when I put my name on that list, I thought I was just signing something that said, like when you go to a wedding or something, to say that you were there.
A register?
And, but as soon as, I remember Sherri was in front of me and I went, "Oh, I guess I'm gonna have to talk in front of everybody." And Bob, I, you know, this is hard to do publicly, but I, first of all, I echo everything that everybody has already said. I came to work with Bob here in Commerce City in 1982, which doesn't seem like that long ago, but it was a while ago. And, you know, even as probably most of you know, we are related, I didn't know Bob that well. But I got to know him really well, working with him for 20 years. And he was a remarkable mentor and friend throughout that time period. And I learned very much about how to be a much better lawyer and a much better person from working with Bob, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I don't know if I can say anymore without choking up a little too much. But I do have some funny stories I'd like to share with you maybe some other time, but I don't think this is it. But, you know, Commerce City, it's been a mutually beneficial relationship. I think the city gained an awful lot. You guys, the city was lucky that Bob was at the arsenal and didn't know really where he wanted to go and decided to stay here in Commerce City. And the city gained a lot by that decision. And I think Bob did too. He has a tremendous love for the city and the community and the people here. And, you know, I, I feel that it's, it's a reciprocal relationship. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. You know, he's right. Commerce City was, was lucky. We've had him for all this time, and it was his family that has suffered and didn't get the chance to have him as much as we have. And I'm, Bob took me and Renee to lunch a while back to tell us he was gonna retire, and it was a tough day for all of us. But I will tell you, what I told Bob, I said, "It's time. Go back, make up for some of that time you spent at council meetings." Alright, next, Jeff Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Jeff Wilson. I'm general counsel for the Colorado Municipal League. And Rachel Allen, our staff attorney, is with me. Rachel's gonna make a presentation on behalf of the larger community, of which Bob is a part, the legal community. But I wanted to share a, a little personal story before Rachel talks about Bob. And so many wonderful things have been said, and I'm sure I'm gonna hear more, but I've been at the Municipal League since 1987, and they think I've been there forever. Well, if I've been there forever, Bob's been here forever squared, you know? And, and I, we have 267 member municipalities, and I talk to municipal attorneys all the time. And I learned early on in my career at the league, talking to all these attorneys about all these issues we're working on, like open records and oil and gas and Tabor and this and that, that there was always a lot of people ready to pull the fire alarm. Because pulling the fire alarm is a very safe course of action. You never miss a fire if you pull the fire alarm every time. But nobody can live like that. And, and I, one of the things I learned was that, that while it's the safe course of action to pull the fire alarm, what takes more seasoning and perspective and maturity, and yes, wisdom, is being able to sort out what doesn't require the fire alarm to be pulled. It takes a lot of nerve to not pull the fire alarm. And I figured out early on that one of the guys I could call, one of the few I could call where I could get that kind of advice, is this gentleman right here. I could get the straight go, and I could, I could talk to somebody who helped me over much of my career distinguish a big issue from a not-so-big issue. And that's something that is a great asset, has been to me and other attorneys around the state representing municipalities, and certainly, as you know, has been to you. So now I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Thank you.
Personally, Bob, I would like to thank you. In the 10 years that I've been practicing municipal law here in Colorado, you've demonstrated incredible generosity with your knowledge of municipal law, with your experience, and every time I've had a question, you've indulged it. So I wanna say thank you for being such an incredible role model for me as an up-and-coming municipal attorney, as well as your friendship. And on behalf of Colorado's cities and towns, we wanna say thank you for hawkishly defending home rule in this state, as well as your service to the citizens, the council, and the staff of the city of Commerce City. And I'd also like to say thank you on behalf of Colorado Municipal Attorneys. You have been a leader, and you've also served as an officer in the Organization for Municipal Attorneys, the Metro City Attorneys Association. And this is just a very small token of our gratitude for your many years of service to Commerce City and to all 271 municipalities in Colorado. Thank you, Bob.
Alright, I've been waiting a long time to say this. The Honorable E.E. Casey Hayes. Casey's still here? Come on up, Mayor.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the good citizens of Commerce City. It's nice to be here. It's nice to play tribute to a person who has had an instrumental part in the growth of our city. Tonight, I speak with the voices of the hundreds of people in Commerce City who are indeed welcoming you and appreciating you for the efforts that you have made on behalf of the community. I think the community is the betterment for all of your efforts, and I certainly am the betterment for my association with you. And I appreciate all the efforts that you've done. I'd just like to go back a little bit in history. Back in the 60s, when we were a second-class city and governed by the statutes of the city of, of the state of Colorado, we had quite a bit of division and lots of problems and everything. At that time, I was just a young Turk, had hair, and was enrolled at the University of Colorado, taking some political science courses. And one of them was constitutional law. And our attorney at that time was promoting some ideas and ordinances and everything. And I kept kinda bugging him a little bit. I said, "Is this constitutional? Is this really right? Is this fair to the people and everything?" Finally, he got a little bit discouraged with me and wanted to set me straight, and probably I needed it. But anyway, he once said to me, he says, "You can do anything you want in government until somebody stops you." And today, I'm even thinking of one of our political candidates for Congress, for presidency that seems to echo that same spirit. It kinda disturbs me that that happens. Anyway, as later on, why, a new council came through and we dismissed and took the resignation of our other attorney, and we brought Mr. Gaylor on board. And I think that's one of the highlights of our whole history of Commerce City in that we started healing as a council. At that time, there was some division on the council, and there was division within the community. And through Bob's interest in fairness and writing ordinances and explaining them to the people that they're not here to govern you, they're more here to help you. And this was what was the big contribution that I think Mr. Gaylor made to Commerce City. I might add, Bob, I believe that you and I are the only two remaining members of the Home, of the Home Rule Charter Convention. Is it?
Larry Ford.
Larry Ford? Okay. I'm sorry, I got, we've got three. And Laverne France. Uh huh, alright. Okay. I just wanted to say, one of the reasons I believe you look so healthy and so good and everything is that occasionally, I would see him at the Gala Gardens having a dinner. And it didn't matter what you ate at the Gala Gardens, whether you had fish or macaroni or ribs or whatever, came this huge dollop of mashed potatoes. And along with that mashed potatoes was just a little bit of brown gravy. And I think, Bob, that's what kept you and I in good spirits and long-lived, is that brown gravy and mashed potatoes at the Gala Gardens and everything. I thought this is something that is of interest to the community that should probably everybody know. That's why I make reference to this, Mr. Mayor, and everything. I just wanna say in closing that we went through some remarkable periods of growth. We came up with a plan to develop the drainage system for Commerce City. And a lot of that was your efforts in getting that going. And the first area that we had was the northeast area, along about Quebec, down to maybe about 72nd Highway 2. It was a small one, but it was an easy one. And we wanted to do that so we could show to the people that our drainage system can be repaired and can be functional. And through that came the park system that we helped develop. And the park system also had the drainage ponds. And if you watch TV and some of the big floods that some of the other cities had, you begin to wonder, "Why don't they have some drainage ponds of a large scale to help them in their flood problems?" But you don't see that, you know? So I think Commerce City is unique in having that, that characteristic and everything. I won't take any more of your time, Mr. Mayor. I assume I'm the last one to speak?
Oh, no, you still have eight people on this council that are gonna speak.
Oh, there's more, is there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, out of consideration to those people, I'll simply say, "Good night and good luck in the future, Bob."
Thanks, Casey. You know, he talks about Gala Gardens. If you wanted to find Bob Gaylor over the last 35, 45 years, 48, I guess, you would go noon to Gala Gardens. You'd find him, find him there. And the Gala Gardens closed its doors just a couple of weeks ago, and that was the end of an era. And tonight, here at the city, Bob Gaylor retiring is the end of another era. Thanks, Casey. You know, he talks about Gala Gardens. If you wanted to find Bob Gaylor over the last 35, 45 years, 48, I guess, you would go noon to Gala Gardens. You'd find him there. And the Gala Gardens closed its doors just a couple of weeks ago. And that was the end of an era. And tonight, here at the city, Bob Gaylor retiring is the end of another era within our community. I want to go ahead and call on my city council, and allow them each the opportunity to express their gratitude. Yes, sir? Okay, I will. Mr. Bullock wants to forego his time to allow anybody else in the audience that wants to speak. Look at that. Renee, some guy's taking your time up. Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Russ Waterson, and I've had some association with the city. I just wanted to tell you a few anecdotes of my dealings with Bob Gaylor. I met Bob, I think, in 1982, when I was a struggling, young, commercial real estate broker with a growing family. And I was dealing with a situation where I had to deal with Bob and one of his clients. And it turned out that it was not a very good situation. I had a legal arrangement with the client. And I got a call from Bob one day, and he said, "Can you come over and speak with me?" And so I did. And he said to me, "You know, my client is not treating you well." And his client was, frankly, trying to be dishonest with me. And he gave me some advice, which was very, and I'm sure part of the reason he did that was to avoid what he could see coming in the future, which would have been a lawsuit with his client. And I thought to myself then, I don't know that in my business lifetime, I have ever met a finer, more honest, more Christian man than Bob Gaylor. And so thereafter, he did some legal work for me, which was very good. And then later, as we, I then became much more involved in Commerce City. And when we donated the land to the city for the Buffalo Run Golf Course, my then attorney and I negotiated along with Bob, and it was always a wonderful, even-handed negotiation. And later, when I was the chairman of the Board of the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and we negotiated another agreement with Bob when the city provided the north ramp off of Penney Boulevard onto Tower Road. And the experience was the same there. It was always even-handed, and honest, and forthright, and right for the city of Commerce City. So you have been well-represented all of these years, and we need more men like Bob Gaylor. Thank you.
Here, here. All right, I know I saw at least one more hand out there. Who else wants to get up? We'll go with the young lady in the back here. Come on forward.
My name's Pam Meyer, and I just have to, if my mom were here, she would just slap her chest and say, "I just love you, Bob, and I just love your wife, Terry." So she always held you in the highest regard, and with the most respect. And you worked together so much through so many, so many changes in the city. And you were always, always a calm voice. You were just always the same, voice of reason. You never let your ego get in the way. You did what was right. And my dad is here, too, to give you his best for your retirement. And I also want to say that I thank you as a Realtor. When, I can't remember when, but I first started, I was a young Realtor, and you helped me to learn how to do handle escapes. And I still do that, and that's just really still a centerpiece of my business now. And you taught me so much. And you're so generous with your knowledge. And I just thank you from our family, and from myself. And we're all better for knowing you. So, thank you.
Okay, there was a hand up over here. Come on up.
My name's Rick Gaylor. I'm Bob's son. I was not going to speak, but I have an auction from the spirit to implore to you the powerful sacrifice that my father has given to the city. I remember growing up that he would work 60, 70-hour weeks. At the time, he also worked for Brighton. There was a period of time where he was city attorney of both cities. They actually had to cut that off because it began to be a conflict of interest. But he was incredibly in demand by everybody. He always took time, though, for the family. He had Friday night pizza. We took long vacations, and I always cherish those moments. I had the opportunity to also work with my dad for about 20 years. I worked in the office on Quebec. And I learned a great deal from him. But what always struck me is the amount of people that would constantly ask for advice, free advice, see him wherever, you know. He actually had people from the city, from personal situations, from, you know, we'd be at a restaurant, people come up and ask him, you know, "What about this or that?" Always took the time to help them. And it was special because, you know, you could see the personal side, I could anyway, I could see the personal side of a very professional individual who took his business very seriously. But at the same time, how he would also be able to have a family, and try to have a personal side of his own affairs. And a lot of it was definitely a conflict with the time that's necessary to do both. But just working with him, and being able to associate with the people that needed his help, and he constantly gave it, you just, you really just don't, you really just don't grasp the amount of sacrifice and effort that that takes. Because you have literally had a man give his life over to the necessity that this city needed in order to get to where it was, and is now. Because what was, was basically, with all due respect, a piece of crap on the other side of the highway with a bunch of refineries that nobody had any respect for. It was Commerce City, and that was the dump. But he made sure that you functioned, you got what was necessary. I remember the dog track, the taxes that he was able to get for the city, the refineries, and they made sure that they paid their due in order for the city to benefit. And only city that was in the black was Commerce City. Everybody else was barely functioning. Then they took all that revenue, and they were to expand it now. And now, you know, you move up north, you move east, and you've got some really beautiful homes, and a lot of people now love to live here. The benefits that the city has, you know, that's a result of taking something from ground zero, and building it day by day by day. And people don't see that when they come in now and understand the sacrifice that it took. You would not have what you have today without individuals like that. And I'll be straight out with you, without my dad, this city would not be what it is. And I want everybody to know that, and people express that. But he deserves that credit and that recognition, far more than just a session like this. But you do what you can, and I know everybody appreciates him. Because you hear words like integrity, professionalism, diplomacy, tact, the ability to converse with people, bring them together when they're at odds with each other, because they don't have the ability to do it themselves, to be able to take this and that, and piece it together, and say, "Hey, we're gonna come to an agreement, and things are gonna function better." And then you have progress. And if you don't have a person like that, I'll tell you, you're not gonna have anything, because it's not gonna function. All you're gonna have is conflict. And you see too much of it today. You guys are gonna miss that ability to be able to have that happen, and to have all that accrue, and come together, and then have something prosperous as a result. For me, it's like, my dad is, I've seen both sides. Like I say, I'm extremely, I'm extremely proud of what he's done, how he sacrificed, what he's given. And like I say, I wasn't gonna say any of this, but, you know, it just kind of touched me, like, you know, I want you to know, when he leaves here, you know, what a special person he is, and the time he's gonna have to be able to recollect on those things as a retirement, which he's put off for years. You know, "I'm gonna retire here, and then this is the next year, and then this is the next year." Because people always need him, and he always wants to help, and be a part, and, you know, because it's his life. So, you know, I could go on and on and on, but I just want that to be the case, that everybody understands that, and they respect him for it.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I'm gonna turn it over to the council. We'll go ahead and start down here at Mr. Douglas's end.
Yes, Bob. Thank you very much for all your years of service. And, you know, your son's right, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. You're like a, if this was a body, you'd be part of the organism here. You would make things function. And it's gonna be tough without you, because there are times when we know we wanted you to go home, be with your family, and you wanted to be here. And you made sure everything functioned the way it's supposed to, and never skipped a beat. I tell you, I'm gonna miss that ESPN little notes on your phone. The $5 charges for phones, Reagan. But foremost, it's your professionalism, and the way you handled yourself. Since I've been in council, been through a lot of things. And you made sure that everything was done right. And whether, no matter what it was, you made sure we also were up to speed, had the knowledge to make sure we made the proper decisions when it came to anything we did here in council. So I appreciate that very much. And you're gonna be missed.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Bob, as I sit here and listen to all the wonderful stories, I haven't heard all of them, I'm sure there's some real doozies out there, but the gracious comments by the people that have known you for several years, they truly care about you, and they truly admire you. You are known for not only your integrity, but your professionalism, and your wisdom. Although I've only worked with you a while, while I've been on council for the last four and a half years, I have known who you were in the community. Not that I'm gonna throw this out there to be mean, but it's true, since I was a child, when my, both my mother and grandmother went to your office for legal services years ago with rental properties. So I just want to say, aside from that, just the institution of wisdom that you have within the city, it's truly been a pleasure to work with you, Bob. You will be missed. You've heard a lot of comments this evening where people kind of choked up a little bit, and I'm kind of just reading through my thoughts so I don't forget what I want to say, because it's sad. I think I can speak for all my colleagues up here on council that although we're happy, very happy for you and your family and your future, we're sad for us and the city. But I just want to extend my well wishes to your family to enjoy Bob on a full-time basis. And I just wish you well for the future.
Mr. McElhany.
I don't know where to begin. The mayor made mention that he was about two years old when you got underway in this, in this career. And there are many that have known you for a long time here in the city. I have a bit of a unique relationship with the Gaylor family. We figured out at a CML dinner one night up in Vail, that Terry was actually my principal in elementary school. And all those years later, I come to work with Bob as a freshly-appointed city council member. Rarely do we get to work with people who are sort of without peer. Bob, that's you. All of us who have had an opportunity to work with you are better for it. I thank your family for the sacrifice over the years. I know what it takes now, after 10 years on council. As a council member, I can't fathom the amount of time, energy, blood, sweat, and tears that you personally have given, and indirectly that your family have given. The city can never do right to thank you. Our words are just that. But I hope you, I hope you know how much I appreciate, and I think the community appreciates what you've done. And we will not be the same, but hopefully we'll take those lessons, and apply them, and do so in your honor. So, thank you.
Mr. Amador.
I think it's time to lighten this up just a little bit. Bob, thank you for your years of service in the advancement for the city, before I was ever even born. And I know that sounds kind of funny. But I think the saying is true, behind every successful man is an exhausted woman. So I want to give condolences to your family for all the sacrifices where you've been gone away from them, because it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of lonely nights. So thank you for everything that you've done for the city, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Mr. Teeter.
Okay, thank you. Well, Bob, I echo a lot what young Mr. Gallagher back there said, Gaylor said back there, you know. Being in the fire service for 34 years, and being away from my family, and I know my family suffered for all those years on the fire service. And I know it's the same way here in the city council, you know. We demand a lot from you all the time. And so I know where the family's coming from, and what the young gentleman said back there. I'm gonna miss the sports talks with you, Bob. We had a lot of, we had fun talking sports all the time. And like I said in the past, you have a fire chief's demeanor, you know. When we get our new problems here in the city, when we got, when I go to a fire on the fire grounds, the first thing you gotta do is you gotta size it up. You gotta keep your troops calm, and you gotta handle the problem. And that's what you do very well. I've never seen you angry, or mad, or raise your voice. Very professional, and you've been great for the city. Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
So, Bob, I know I've only gotten to get to know you for about four and a half, five years now. And from what I've gathered at this point, it's just a very small blip. um, small blip, um, of what you've done with Commerce City. And even when I, um, started out as a newly freshly appointed city council member back in, um, two thousand and eleven, I always heard about the legendary Bob Gaylor stories. Um, and to me, you just always kinda had that infectious smile, that person that you could kinda talk to and just kinda made your day feel better. Um, now being on council again for the last few months, I don't know how long I've been on it, um, this time, it's just, it's like back to normal. It's like those four years just never happened, like the time that I was away, and, um, you were just always you. And I remember when, um, back in December, I stopped by the, um, Commerce City Museum and Ms. Stevenson kinda showed me around with my wife and kids, and we saw, uh, pictures of you, and we heard stories of you, and it was like the legend of Bob Gaylor all over again. And I was telling my wife all about you based on, uh, things that I had learned from the past and from what we learned from, uh, Ms. Stevenson when I went to that museum. And no one could ever tell all the things that you've done with the city just because you were always just Bob. And when you see a legend kinda go away and you don't really think about all the things that they've done because they were just Bob, uh, it says something, and I think that your humility, um, is something that we should all admire. You've done a lot for Commerce City, but I think the humility that you possess is something that we should all, um, aspire to be. So I do wanna thank you for honestly the four or five years that I've gotten a chance to get to know you and, um, looking forward to hearing some stories from your families. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Proton Bullock.
I just wanna say, thank you, Bob. You know, people are taken for granted because they're always there, and Bob's always been there. If you had a problem, you went into Bob's office, we closed the door, we'd sit, we'd talk. I'd leave, there was no longer a problem, or if it, it wasn't my problem, it was now Bob's problem. But, Bob, uh, you would not believe all the insight and thoughtful information Bob would give me on different issues when you had to go and discuss it with Bob. And from time to time, Bob would call me up and say, what do you think about this? And I'm thinking to myself, wow, if Bob's asking me what I think about this, we're in trouble. Because, uh, I don't know. Well, starting tomorrow, there will be no Bob. And your son's right, we sometimes become so used to things being around, we never think we're gonna lose them. And we aren't losing Bob, but we just won't have Bob anymore. And I'm gonna miss you, not just as an attorney, but as a friend, because we've had a friendship. And you have guided me through some rough waters and helped me a many a time when I'm thinking to myself, okay, how are we going to pull this off? And you would just say, don't worry about it, everything's gonna work out. And guess what? Everything worked out. I just wanna thank you, Bob, for everything you've done for me, everything you've done for this council and previous councils and everything you've done for Commerce City. You've been a rock. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Couple more things, try to lighten it up just a little bit. I mean, uh, this is all great, and we all love Bob and love everything that he's done for this community, um, but, you know, I wanna talk about some fun times, too. Um, I'll, I'll never forget there was, uh, his son brought this up about all the people that he helped in the community, the free alert legal service that he, um, provided. It, it would be amazing if you knew how many hours he could've logged at Gala answering, uh, legal, legal issues. But I'll never forget, I had this gentleman in the city that, um, felt that he was gonna be dying soon, and he wanted to fix his will. And he said, I have to, and I'm not gonna mention his name because you all would know him, he says, I have to see an attorney. I gotta fix my will. And I said, well, okay, well, let me see if Bob can answer your question for you. And so, um, this was quite some time ago, um, I was still pretty young and, and just newly elected, and I brought this guy over to Bob's office, he was still up on, on Seventy Second, and, uh, Bob said, well, what can I do for you? And he says, look, I wanna fix my will. And Bob said, well, what do you wanna fix? He says, well, I wanna change it, I don't want my wife to get all of it. I only want her to get half. And Bob said, well, she is only getting half, that other half's already hers. And this, this guy looked right, and I'm standing there trying to figure out how he's gonna fix this guy's will to, to cut the wife out of it, and this guy goes, I never thought of it that way. This is, he says, I guess I don't need to change my will if she's only getting half anyway, and we left. And so, some of that advice, and, and to be able to sit and watch it work, I mean, it was just that stone cold, I'm gonna tell you like it is, and, uh, the guy was totally satisfied, and it wasn't a few months later, he passed away, his wife ended up getting his half and her half. So it worked out perfectly. I don't know if you remember that, Bob, but, uh, uh, some interesting, interesting times. And, uh, I will tell you, there was a lady called me just last week, and she says, Mayor, I need to call you. She says, and, and I know the lady, she's, she's called me many times, she says, I have a friend and, and some colleagues that I work with that really need, um, to talk to the city attorney. And I said, well, um, what about? She said, well, he is the attorney for everyone in the city, right? And you wanna laugh, but these people actually have thought that for forty-eight years, because that's what Bob did. And I know if I would've said, sure, call him up, he would've sat there and he would've listened to that person and done everything he could've done to help her, um, because that's how Bob has always been. Um, he's just been, uh, a great guy, uh, a good friend to my father, and, uh, you know, it's tough to see him go, um, but I'm very, very happy for Bob. Um, Bob's went through some trying times. Um, I, I remember when he was going through, uh, cancer issues, I remember when, not too long ago, he was worried about his wife because of cancer type issues that, um, and I'm glad everything has, has held together for Bob so that now he can enjoy some quality time before it's too late. I want him to go out and enjoy his family. Um, they deserve that, and he deserves that. And as much as you wanna hold on to things, and you know, Bob, when he came to talk to me and Renee, he said, he said, you know what, Sean? He says, um, I'm sorry to tell you this, uh, that I'm retiring, and I really don't wanna leave you guys hanging. And I said, I've been expecting it, you should've did it five years ago. You deserve to be happy, too. I mean, you can only put in so much effort, and Mr. Gaylor has done that. Um, he has, he has put in a lifetime of service. And I know the pay will never have been enough. It wasn't that long ago, this council was looking at an issue that was brought to us that is Bob Gaylor moonlighting, because he would help everybody. And that's all okay, he never charged them, he always helped people. And, um, I don't know, uh, what Robert Sheasley's gonna do when the people of the Commerce City residents start calling and saying, hey, Robert, I know you're probably with your wife having dinner, but I need to fix my will. It's coming, Robert. And the other good thing is, and, and I wanna introduce to you, um, Robert Sheasley, would you stand up, please? Robert is the interim city attorney, and he has the biggest shoes in the state of Colorado Phil, and no doubt about that. But the good thing is, is we got a guy with the same name. Because I am gonna screw that up more often than not. So, um, welcome, Mr. Sheasley, and you'll do a fine job. Um, but, Mr. Gaylor, you are an icon, and, uh, you have done so much, and, and there's so much, um, that we forget and, and that you can't account for. All of the, uh, arsenal cleanup, the water, the negotiations, all of the things that happened to, to secure this, this community, its water with Gene Klein and, and the efforts between the city and the water district, and everything that has taken place, um, over time, uh, Mr. Gaylor has had his hand in that issue and, and has helped to make that, whatever that issue was, um, to, to remedy that for our community, and often he did it without any notoriety. Um, but tonight, um, a very good friend of mine, Mr. Gaylor, um, I wish you very, very well in your, in your next, that, your, your next life with your family. I have a few things here that we want to, uh, to do for Bob, so I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, read a proclamation, uh, if I can get through it, I'm sure I will. And I've always had Bob read the proclamations. Um, I've read a couple when he wasn't, wasn't here, but, uh, he always has done that for me. City Commerce City, Colorado proclamation, whereas city attorney Robert R. Gaylor is retiring from the City of Commerce City after forty-seven years of faithful service, and whereas Mr. Gaylor established a solid foundation for the city's growth, drafting the municipality's Home Rule Charter, which has stood the test of time with only five amendments since its adoption in nineteen seventy. And whereas Mr. Gaylor was instrumental in creating the city's tax code and successfully represented the city through the Colorado Supreme Court in obtaining approval of the only wagering tax on a dog track in the state of Colorado. And whereas during Mr. Gaylor's tenure, the city achieved great things, including the expansion of its municipal boundary, construction of the recreation center, Buffalo Run golf course, and the civic center, acquisition and establishment of the Victory Crossing, and a role in the Aerotropolis. And whereas the legacy of Mr. Gaylor's distinguished career is founded in the leadership, integrity, and values he brought to the city of Commerce City, serving as a role model for all who choose public service. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of Commerce City honors city attorney Robert Gaylor and hereby proclaims April fourth, two thousand and sixteen, as Robert R. Gaylor Day, in recognition for his service to the city councils and our community. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the fourth day of April, two thousand and sixteen. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Mayor Sean Ford. All right, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to accept the pro- proclamation.
Yeah? Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Um, we'll bring this down to you in a minute, Bob, but we're not done yet. All right, now we have a resolution. This is a resolution regarding naming, naming of the city council chambers as the Robert R. Gaylor City Council Chambers, uh, number twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. Whereas city attorney Robert R. Gaylor has served the City of Commerce City faithfully for forty-seven years, and whereas during Mr. Gaylor's tenure, he established a foundation for the community to thrive, drafting the city's first charter approved by voters, creating the city's tax code and the agreement for Victory Crossing, and whereas on August thirty-first, twenty, uh, two thousand and nine, city council adopted resolution two thousand and nine dash thirty-one, which has established a procedure for naming city facilities. Whereas naming a city facilities after citizens must meet a certain criteria, including that the citizen shall be an outstanding or exceptional person who has been involved with the City of Commerce City, state of Colorado, or the United States, and the individual must be someone who is or was instrumental in furthering the cause of a greater Commerce City through such means as leadership, youth service, cultural diversity, agricultural hist- history, civic responsibility, uh, education, business promotion, or a longtime resident. And whereas Mr. Gaylor meets this criteria and is retiring from City of Commerce City April fourth, two thousand and sixteen, and whereas the city council finds and determines that naming Robert R. Gaylor, uh, council chambers complies with city council policy number CP dash seven and would be in the best interest of the citizens of Commerce City. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of City of Commerce City, Colorado as follows, Commerce City Civic Center's city council chambers should be and is named the Robert R. Gaylor City Council Chambers. Resolved in past, this fourth day of April, twenty sixteen, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford. And I'm open for a motion. Let me go, let me try to get everybody, uh, Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Amador.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second for the resolution twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Congratulations. Get that hard part out of the way for me, Bob. Your hard part's coming. Mine's out of the way. All right. Now I need to invite Bob and the city council members to the front of the dais where two microphones will be placed to present Bob with the following gifts. So please, Bob, come forward and stand up here with the city council and myself, um, we're going to, uh, give you a few things, and, um, then we're gonna have you say a few words. We have a, uh, bouquet of flowers here. I know it doesn't fill that void, but it's, uh, at least shows you our appreciation. Now, I need, uh, let's do the proclamation and the resolution. Here's the resolution, Bob. It's, uh, turn around, please. Yeah, that'd be good. Step right back here, a little closer. Yeah, you're okay, just back up a little bit. Here's a hole for you. All right, there you go. That, that'll be fine, that'll be fine. All right, so that's the resolution and the proclamation that we just passed, and, uh, this, this council chambers will always be named that, Bob. See, the next thing we need is the, uh, street sign.
I got it.
Oh, you got it, Renee? All right.
Oh, gosh!
So, uh, we want everybody to do it the Bob Gaylor way. Next, we have a, a photo collage. Hold on. All right, here's your photo collage, Bob, of, uh, just some memories, the stuff that the staff has put together for you. Um, let's see here, now I wanna invite you, Terry, I don't want you to have to stand up here for a long time. See, you're more than welcome to sit down, we're gonna let Bob talk for a little while. We, yeah, we got pictures before we get down, please? Great. All right, Bob, these microphones are, are live, um, we'll take these gifts- We'll take these gifts on down for you. You don't have to worry, it's all taken care of for you now. You used to be the worker bee, now someone else can do some work for you, all right? You don't have to do nothing. Just step up to a microphone and address the community.
Well, this is tough. As a starting point, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. It's, a lot of this has seemed a surprise to me. I didn't see any of these things coming, so I appreciate that. Thanks for being here. I became city attorney in nineteen sixty-eight. That's a lot of meetings, a lot of city council meetings, a lot of legal opinions. But, you know, looking back, I don't know where the time flew. Seems like only yesterday when I was sworn in as city attorney for the city of Commerce City. But it's been, it's been a good time. And with that, I want to tell everyone here that I've appreciated my time as city attorney for the city of Commerce City. I'll miss the people. That's the hard part. Tomorrow, I'll be in retirement, starting a new chapter in my life, which will be good. But I'll miss the people. I'll miss the citizens of Commerce City. I'll miss the city council. And I consider them all friends, even though they're my bosses. I consider them personal friends. I'll miss the staff. Brian McBroom, the city manager included. And I'll miss the people in my city attorney staff. Jackie Banks, who's with me for twenty-four years, is secretary administrative assistant. My attorneys, Robert Cheesely, Karen Stevens, I'll miss them. And certainly, I'll just miss being in city hall with coming in in the morning, sitting at my computer, starting the day, seeing what I had to do that day. It'll be different. I want to tell everyone here that I appreciate you being here tonight. And I really do want to tell you that I have enjoyed being city attorney for the city of Commerce City. It's a lot of years, but it's been very rewarding. And I want to introduce my wife, Terry, again, have her come up. Have my son, Rick, and my daughter-in-law, Kim, come up. My granddaughter, Tara, I appreciate having you here tonight. I want you to come up and be introduced by the people here because I appreciate you being here. It's been a good journey. He waited a lot of nights for me to come home from city council meetings. Some of those nights were pretty late, so I want to thank her for the support she's given me through the years. And thank Rick and Kim and Tara. My granddaughter Tiffany couldn't be with us tonight. She's sorry she couldn't be here. My daughter Debbie and her family live in Maryland. We're sorry they couldn't be here tonight, but they send their thanks for the way you treated me. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say farewell as city attorney. And it's been a good journey. I'll see you down the road.
Thank you, Bob. And that is going to conclude our business here in the council meeting. So, if there be no further business to come before the city council, we're adjourned. And I would like to invite everybody out into the atrium to enjoy some snacks and some cold drinks with Bob Gaylor. Thanks, Bob. Enjoy the rest of your life.